Yeah.
And that's our.
No.
That's what we have to do.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I mean, that's okay.
But you know, just.
Does he go on?
Yeah. Yeah, that's where he seems.
Okay, it may be other time. It may be any time.
Yeah. And pray too, if you want me to.
Yeah, which is my seat.
I'll help out anyway.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna go. Oh, you were here.
I swear this to you.
Back for.
Yeah. I wasn't the newest member until like. When are you gonna come start training with us? Ask you guys over and over and over.
Yes.
Hey, did you guys see Lloyd's picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. He got in a war.
I did.
Wow.
And he's in a white shirt.
What?
So just you know that.
You never dress up for plenty of times.
It was something to do with that picture. I don't know if it was the lighting, but really made me look bald.
Leave the hat on. Leave it on.
I tried to do it back at the picture. No, no, anytime you guys want to come over and bring this.
Yeah.
You guys are more lucky. It's genius.
What's going on with the fire district? I know that G I S is working on fire district now.
No, it's on Mitch's table. Um, has been for. Most years. So more values would take to.
Does smaller values, does smaller values want?
Yeah.
They might as well.
I mean.
We don't have.
These are.
Hi, you made it. Did you just spend the night?
No.
Happy you should've. Very good.
So. The modified district, which this is where a lot of people.
So if we just kind of review that maybe?
Okay.
Look back at it and see.
See. Hey.
Cause that is state code.
Do I make a motion to go to work to the succession?
You do. I'll pull it up and. We gotta do roll call and then.
There's something dark.
Just that's.
We're gonna, we're gonna protect. We'll just protect the rest of the town.
I was up at. I was up at six this morning.
Hey, that's early.
Making sourdough biscuits for my daughter.
Yeah. Your eyes are covered.
Yeah. At that day, it's funny. The F B A was.
Oh, you didn't know he had F B A.
Yeah, probably. She does the sheet.
Would you keep track of this important papers in that one?
No, I haven't done anything.
This place.
Click on your hour back here. This is, it'll take a few minutes. So you just go through the top right there, call the order.
Okay.
Roll call, when we're ready.
So.
We still have to get the computer stuff.
I know. So when, so I start.
It's eleven fifty-two or it's nine.
Yeah, but.
Nine fifteen.
After the roll call, then I make the motion to go to other work meeting or not? I don't make a motion. Just go like, okay.
First item on our agenda today is.
Okay. Okay. I mean, there was something. I had a question on the agenda. I can't remember where it was now.
It's, it's set up for two computers.
I'm cold.
Kristen. Kristen, when we're done, just, I gotta ask you one question.
Anne is here, so. Do you know we're gonna have to let you in, Anne?
No, we do, we do.
Sorry about that.
Oh, mine. Look, you look a little school. It's just because it never sees the light of day.
It doesn't, it really doesn't.
I know, me too.
Was it in the times or the some times?
You look like a real fire chief.
I am. I just feel like Sam Blod. Wear my white helmet out there, then when I go across the county line, I put my hat on.
That's the next thing.
Um, it was on.
No, I'm hungry. I always say hungry.
Do you have some tea?
Oh, I have some crock or something. But that's funny, cause I eat nacho when I push my.
I know, you do.
My perfect day would be to eat a pepper.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
You know, it's kind of.
Do you want me to tell Rosa to turn the heat up a little?
Okay.
Are you cold?
It is cold here. Maybe Rosa no has to go home.
First time in, you know, second year.
Recording his V C one.
Fourth place is a team. First time since.
She says we're live.
Early nineties.
Yeah. Okay, I'll switch to you. The mic's on. Go back to that one. Do it again. There we are. Now we're on, videos on. Okay, okay. This is you. Sorry about that delay there.
Some, yeah, he said, he said his call dropped. He had passed through blinding, so about, about ten, fifteen minutes. He texted.
Do you want that chair though?
We're recording.
No, I'm good.
You were like, hold it.
If you want it.
Good morning. We'd like to call the meeting to order and. Today, um, this is a board of commissioners work session meeting and we'll. Come a roll call. Commissioner Man is here, Commissioner Staffs, Commissioner Harvey's on the way and we'll. Just have one item in the agenda. It's a joint county commission work session and planning commission to coordinate and discuss the twenty twenty-five. Sony ordinance. So, do we have a?
So, um, kind of, this was at the request of some of the planning commission, as well as the commission, see the same thing is like. Coming together just as a both bodies and trying to. Get a good game plan to go forward with this. Um, the current status and all, all of you are aware, um, you've seen kind of these. Uh, commi- community meetings that we've been going to and, and receiving a lot of good feedback. Uh, this kind of, for me. You know, Kristen's done a, an excellent job in presenting. You know, how we got here and where we need to go, but most importantly, just listening to the community of what they want. It was something. If you remember back when we started this process and we hired the consultant to come in and we went out to the public to have this community engagement and. Nobody showed up. And so now they're paying attention and they're showing up. And so it's like, kind of going back in time, but for me, you know, I was talking to, um. Some of the individuals last night. Um, as, you know, it's, it's crazy, it's chaos, but the good thing is the fact that the community is coming out and they're paying attention to the ordinances. It's got to reflect their desires and, and their wants. And now we're hearing that. And so now it's just trying to, to get. Both bodies together and, and how to move forward with that. I think we're getting a lot of good comments and suggested items to add. I hear common. Um, throughout these meetings that we need to simplify, simplify the language, make it readable. Um, it can't be, Kristen does a good job of, of explaining. But then if you go to the pages and that explanation is gone, you know, it's how do we, how do we get that document to where? Somebody, you know, if, if the example that was brought up last night, Kristen moves on. Her expla- explanation of that and her interpretation of it also could move on. So we need to make sure that we're. Clearly and well spoken in that document so that it's not subject to interpretation because you've seen that on the other side is the developers are coming in. All this, and Lloyd, I've seen you in these arguments where you're like, well, no, that's not how I read that. That, and you had it. You know, whether it was Scott or whoever is like, oh, this is how, this is how we're applying it, but that's not how I'm reading it. And so. We need to make sure that we can avoid that. And so I think this meeting today was literally just to get everybody together and talk about what we need to do going forward. So I turn it over to you. I am out.
Anyway, Anne, you have some questions you were asking. Um, maybe.
Well, I think in my email I had mentioned.
Yeah, is this publicly broadcast?
It is publicly broadcast. Do you want a microphone? Would a microphone be easier than just, you can sit there and then?
Okay.
We can just pass the mic.
That, that the worst part is, you know, like you can't hear the people.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Unless you're Lloyd.
Did we get Shay online?
Uh, I hope so. Is Shay online on the people?
Uh, nobody's been online yet.
Not yet.
Can you turn this one on? It's. The far, you don't really see it on there. Can't do it. Okay, hold on. Hopefully this will work. Okay, can you hear me? All right, okay. Ah ha. You have to sing first.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was, I have, like, my top five karaoke songs. Um.
Do you say your name?
I'm Anne Austin. From Spanish Valley and my email that I, um, shared with everyone was addressing concerns that have been brought up from the public, but. Um, I also feel like there's a, uh, legitimate need to address and that is. How the public can communicate with planning commissioners in a way that is, um. Protected, um, that is transparent, that. Keeps everybody on the same page. Um. And going forward, you know, sounds like that has been addressed, that maybe Mac, you are. Looking at government emails for the planning commissioners.
So, yes, okay.
People want to communicate with them. How do you?
They do a hundred percent. So I'd reached out, I tried to do it myself on Google to create, um, and bring in your emails under just one email. I couldn't do it, so I pitched it to our tech team. So that was last week before even the request came in. I had seen that, that, that continues to be an issue. We had talked about it previously and so. I couldn't do it. Shoved off to my I T team to, to work with. They've got three kind of specialists and so I'll wrap up, I'll. Ask them again where they're at in that process and so.
Yeah, I think it's doable.
I do too.
On my personal email.
So it would be a, so it'd be a San Juan County, it'd be like San Juan County. What I propose is S J C Planning Commission. And then, then anything that comes in would automatically feather out to you guys. I could, I just couldn't figure out how to feather it out without creating conflicts and so.
Um.
Hopefully they can figure it out with our system.
And another, uh, option that might help collect public comments going forward, not just for this land use ordinance, but just in general. I know other counties have used this Google survey, so people can go to the website, they can click on this, um, or it's not a survey, it's a public comment form. Um, and they can put their name in, where they live and what their comment is. And it's quite, it's very generous with words. But I think what you can do as staff, you could compile all of those comments by name and, um, you know, like on a table of some kind so that then it's. Kind of organized.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Um, so that's another simple, potentially simple way to collect and organize and then disseminate them. So then all of those comments can be. Uh. Turn, um, converted into a table and those could all be emailed out to everybody.
Commissioner Man has a comment.
So Kristen, when you get the comments right now, you're providing a spreadsheet. Are you, you're, you're collecting the data on a spreadsheet, right?
No.
So that's what, so like when I sent to you, like if I get anything, I just forward it to you. So, yeah, how do these guys know everything's going on? How do you know what's going on?
Right now, right now, the method is just to forward each email to, sorry, thank you.
I'm against my own rules. Right now, the method we're using is that as I get emails, that all of them are just immediately forwarded to the planning commissioners. And then we usually have a summary sheet. Um, I, I will say that the comments are getting less. Uh, broad and very more specific, like the A P area is a, is a good example of that. Um, and so having those in a short bullet pointed summary, when we do come back to planning commission to discuss it, is probably. Uh, fitting versus having a bunch of one comments on a spreadsheet. I can put them on a spreadsheet. Um, or we can just say kind of general comments, this, I, I just think it's an extra step that might not get us. Much ground, but I do like the Google forms that would automatically, we could set up a Google form that automatically kicks to planning commission. Um, I will, we need to think through the legalities of that. Right now with grammar requests. Everything's time stamped of when I received a request, when I responded, when I sent it to planning commission, who I sent it to. And so, um, coming at it with that lens, it might be a little bit harder to track a Google form. We can see when they're submitted, but. Ultimately, people could type in like whosoever name they wanted to and submit. And so I think, I think there's some things we'd need to work through.
And see, cause I know on our website, it doesn't really show. So there's a, there's a function on, on our website where individuals, people can. Communicate with staff through a comment form and then that's automatically distributed to, um, San Juan County info. It's the email address. And so we can work on that. It was interesting when we had the consultant here through that process. They had a system, exactly what you're saying, you know, it tracked the documents. We had it on a spreadsheet, so we knew. What the comments were about and we, yeah, and what they needed changed. So we had that system, but without the consultant. We can work on a Google form and, and creating it on, and put it on Kristen's website under the planning that, hey, if you want to make a comment, just go here.
So we actually had that all the way up until last week. We had a, a comment form on our website. It's, it's always been there. Um, I took it off last week in an effort to simplify things, but.
Would it be easier just to add it back on?
We can add it back on, but I'm, I'm just telling you, it's always been there and I haven't received comments that way.
And so, and we've been working on this ordinance for however many years.
Yes.
And people don't know, so it's, it's an educational piece. I think we need to make sure people know where to go when we keep.
Yeah. So we can, we can pull that platform and put it back on our website, but just know that it's been there the whole time and no one's used it.
Well, but we're telling them in our meetings.
Contact.
Email.
And, and that just makes it easier. You, you should know we're getting quite a few grammar requests at this point in time and it's just, it makes it real. Slick for me if I've just got everything in the email. I can just do an email search, pull everything up, done.
So just know with the grammar laws and the rules, your, your emails, because of the body that you set in, uh, as planning commissioners. Those are grammarable. We've received requests in the past for your personal email. Um, any information, cause one, and I've seen it to where individuals may contact you directly. And not go through Kristen, not go through me or the commission or the whole planning commission body. Uh, but there will be times where you may get grandmaed just to. Hey, do you have any emails from Kristen or from me or from, you know, Joe Dirt out there regarding this subject and you would have to then. Submit that to Kristen so that we could fulfill that grammar request. Those do actually happen.
So do you guys forward all your emails to Kristen if you get them? Like if, if one comes to you personally, do you forward them to her or do you? Respond and then, cause like I give all my information, like if they're asking a question, so she has a record of it.
I, I get some commissioners, I, I don't know how many commissioners are being contacted directly. Um, I do have. A few commissioners, Melissa Riggs being the first one to come to mind. Anything she gets, she, she sends to us and then I send it to all of the planning commission.
No, it's just, it's not a requirement to send them, but I think just be aware that they are grammarable, even in your personal email accounts. And that's kind of where we're. We're trying to remove you a little from the public interface if we can set up this email account to where it goes directly to you behind the system. I've seen other entities do the same thing. When I was on the planning commission. Uh, for myself, we gave out our personal emails. They were listed on the website and we received them personally, but we're trying to do a one step remove. For you with this.
Yeah, as long as I have the record in my email, then we don't have to deep dive your laptop. Sort of a situation. So it's a, it's a way to protect our planning commission's private, privacy and private email accounts.
We tried to get emails back when Walder was here.
We're still trying. The request is in.
And the hard part is it's, it's a government system. I can, I can set it up for one person to check, but it's when it's. Distributed out, that's where, that's where I lost it with Google and Google customer service. And I'm like, I, we're paying I T for this, let's just have them. Work their magic on it. And so hopefully they'll be able to figure out that process. It's, it happens. I've seen it. Grand County has it. Grand County Commission has it to where, you know, somebody sends Grand County Commission at this email, it goes out to all the, the commissioners. And so I know it's possible. I can function it. And so I'm like, I'm out of it.
You know, I don't get. Um. Necessarily personal emails except the group, you know, like.
Yeah.
You know, the. The attorneys sending stuff out. So I don't forward those on. I do get texts.
And those are grammarable as well. So just keep that in mind.
So what should we do with them?
You will have to be trained on that. So.
Okay.
In your, in your first, I mean, keep your, you're supposed to keep your text messages and that one's a, a little bit more difficult. Um. I don't understand the state legislator's thoughts behind the text side of it, but, um, you know, as county staff, we're supposed to keep them.
And another thing, we're talking about rules and laws and things that, we also, we are multicultural, you know, each towns have their ways to deal with things. And somebody. May feel comfortable to talk to somebody that they know in the group and they can contact and sometimes it's just a. You know, they don't wanna email. To some people, takes a while to write maybe an email or maybe they don't have a. That's how the older people cannot afford to have all the amenities like email, so, I mean, internet and all this stuff. Anyway. Like, like with me, people, they reach out to me at the store, you know, they'll ask something. Because they're afraid and sometimes, um, they feel more comfortable if they know somebody they can trust and they feel more like asking a question. So I think there's those moments. That people want to know how to maybe reach the person that represent their area to see how they affect, you know, and so. So those are kind of hard to, to send. But, but we do, is, you know, sometimes they see a new face and probably they don't trust them as much as somebody that. You know, had lived in the neighborhood for years and years. And so we had to take in consideration into that too.
So in that case.
If you, if a planning commissioner wants to share with someone at the grocery store their personal email address, if that makes that person more comfortable. Then that's their own choice, right? They can do that. They just have to be aware that it could be grimmid.
Yes, exactly.
But on one level, it's nice to have just an official.
Yes.
Way.
And the other part of that is if I have a text conversation with somebody, that's personal. Whether I'm talking about what's going on in, uh. In the county or not, I, I don't know how the state looks at that, but my text is personal with the emails. I can understand the grammar request on that, but on the text, I can have a personal conversation with my neighbor. About what's going on in the community and what ordinances are gonna be changing. That's a personal conversation to me.
So. It's a good Jen's question.
Yeah, that's a really good question because that.
The subject matter, say for example, is San Juan County twenty twenty-five ordinance and it's a personal conversation, well. Cause you've got San Juan County, you know, twenty twenty-five ordinance in that, well, that's a conversation that you had with the public and you represent the public. And so that would be grammarable, even if the contents in there would be private. That's a, follow that line with.
That is, yeah. That's a hard line.
Yes, yep. Cause then that's what, uh, we want to try to separate you personal and, and that's the difficulty. That we had with the commissioners, you know, the former commissioners were exactly that. It's like, no. This is my personal email and this is my personal phone. Like, yeah, but you're doing, you're operating for on behalf of the county in that capacity. So therefore they are not personal. Everything on there is subject to grandma. And we contested that. We're currently in a. Lawsuit that is contesting that as well on a cell phone. Um, we've received those requests before. For text messages and cell phones and, you know, one commissioner lost his cell phone. So he no longer has it. And so just happened that way. You know, he no longer has access to his email account because.
Can you use a hammer?
It was stolen. And, and so we're like, no. And that, the difficult part that the public has on that transparency level is. In order to get into the cell phone, that's a subpoena to Verizon or A T and T to pull those records and who can afford that? And so. So there's some difficulty nuances. Just be cautious and be mindful, you know, that they can be grammarable. And so I'll just leave it at that. The nuances with it make it a little bit more difficult.
So there's no difference between an elected official and appointed when it comes to the grammar request.
Because you represent, you're a representative body, um, no. It's, you've got to be transparent, you know, and, and that's why you've seen, and one of the things that we've got to be cautious with your emails, we're seeing that. And Jen's. Jen's set it out, sent it out last week, I think. He's like, hey, stop with the mass forwarding of these emails because. You're constituting a quorum and you're having this discussion that isn't, you know, with the public. And so we've got to make sure that if you are responding to Kristen, don't respond as a whole body. You know, just. Respond to it and as an individual, don't C C everybody on it because that. because that you're now in a meeting and giving advice, directives, things like that that really should take place in, in an actual open meeting. And so.
Basically, I can send it to you.
Yes, don't mass respond because Jen's had got on there last week. He's like, hey, stop. You know, you're, you're violating the Open Meetings Act. And so.
Commissioner Monhasa comment?
Well, actually, I'm not even on that topic. So if you have any more questions on that, then we can. But I guess my thing is, is I kind of would like to hear what you guys have collectively heard from the community and constituents about the direction with this planning and zoning. And maybe we could tell you what we've heard, kind of what the the feedback we've heard and where people are kind of asking, the things are asking.
Trent, lead us away. Or Lloyd, lead us away.
I'm gonna say it, but everybody in this room is gonna hate me.
Lloyd, say it. You're live. Go for it.
My opinion on this ordinance moving forward, and this is, I mean, you can call it public clamor, whatever you want to call it. With the, with what we've taken in, in the last couple of months, we need to go back to the basics. We need to go back to where this started with what Alex had put together. We need to, because and I, and I'm looking at this from a different position as the ordinance that we're putting forth right now is more of a municipality. It's more of an HOA. It is very specific to certain items that you would see more in a, a city or a HOA. I think we need to go back to the basics, go back to our definitions, very defining, which I think we had that in the one that we started with. There is a couple of things we should go over in it. I don't think we should put it off for six months, by no means. Because, I mean, me and Trent have been working on this for ten, eleven years now. So, you know. Guess you could say what's another six months to that, but it's been, it's been a lot of work. We've went through different administrators in both the county and planning zoning. We've worked on this a lot and I don't want to see us just keep pushing it off, pushing it off. But I do agree to this, the fact that we need to go back to the basics, get rid of a lot of the legal push that we had on this. Because I know this, this even came from the state coming down, which are the one that's from the state, lives in the city. You know, and and that's what they're accustomed to. You're talking Salt Lake County, you're talking the big counties that is, the majority of the counties within a city. So where we are very small cities in a very, very large county and to be so restrictive of this county at this point, because we want the growth. We want people coming in. We want, we want to make it affordable. I mean, I look at, you know, between, for, for Spanish Valley alone, just to put a shovel on the ground, you're paying eight thousand dollars in impact fees through the service district for water and sewer. Then you're paying another five or six thousand dollars for a permit, because our permits are out of control, the fees on it. So just, just to put a shovel on the ground, you're already fourteen thousand dollars and that's just to get started. That's just to get a permit. That's without anything else. If you include an architect and an engineer, you've got, you know, you're another twenty grand into that. So that's just to get started on something that we want to make affordable. We want, because I look at it this way, the more permits we get out there, the more people moving in, the more property taxes that are collected. Same with businesses. We want businesses in because we want, we want the sales tax. We want, on our nightly rentals, we get a certain amount of the TRT tax plus the sales tax. We, we want things moving in the county. We do not want to deter that by making it so overbearing by the county of, you know, if you, when we, and we watch history in Grand County of where they've gone with it. They've, they've made it to where you can't do anything. It, to put a simple IRC modular, which is considered a state-built home in the state of Utah, to put one in, I can get it through the building department in a week. It takes almost two months to get it through planning zoning, to get it approved. We don't want to be there. We want to get people in. We want to, we want to make sure that we're making it as easy as possible to get people to where if they have land, they can subdivide it, they can put a home in. We, we don't want to make it such a process that, I mean, it, it just never happens. So that's my opinion about it.
Don't give it to Kristen.
It's gotta get warmed up, Trent. That's, that's our takeoff and landing.
I, I agree, of course, with Lloyd. He's been a huge driver in planning commission, period. I think one of the things, this document is very large because we put a lot of checklists in it. And those checklists right now are standalone documents. So if you stop by my office, there's a checklist for subdivision. There's a checklist for, you know, conditional use permits. There's a checklist and what we were trying to do is make it a one-stop shop in the ordinance. So you just go to that chapter and everything's right there. But I think what we're hearing is we want to make it simpler. Maybe we pull those checklists back out and just have kind of a summary of what you need to do for the process. Or reference the checklist, um, to make it simpler to view. But know that the checklist is there regardless. It's just where we put it to be more friendly to the public.
We had developers, when they, when they would go to subdivide, they were getting lost in the process. And that's what kind of originated into the checklist so that they could easily follow a process that are, those individuals doing the surveys could easily follow the process, you know, because they were getting lost in the language of the 2011 ordinance. And so we tried to make it a little bit simpler for people, but we can always reference, kind of like Kristen said, take them out and reference them.
I mean, taking this job on, that was the first thing I did. I was like, I can't figure out the process. I'm reading the 2011, like, okay, so they do this and then, and then where does it go? Who gets it? Who needs to review it? And so we, we wrote all that out in the ordinance.
Which.
I like having it in the ordinance as a one place, but.
I don't think that's the issue. I don't think the checklist is the issue.
Is it what's in the checklist?
The regulations.
Change in the regulation is the issue. And that's why the public wants.
Where we are getting so much kickback.
Sure. But it's also where we have the most flexibility of, of change. So what do we want to see?
I don't agree with that. The flexibility and.
So when, when you put a document out there that this is what it is and, and like right at the top, it says, anything not listed is not permitted. I mean, it says it right, right out of the gate. So that right there is, okay, if it's not on here, we cannot do it.
And that's, that's been a legal issue with us is.
Because remember, our initial document, and I was pro this, our original document said.
Our original document said, anything we haven't thought of, we'll add. That's, that's basically what the original document said, right? If we haven't thought of it, come pitch it and we'll just add it. The problem with that is all the public noticing that has, because it is a zone change. And that's a, that's a legal state of Utah thing.
It's a mass mailer to every.
And so that's where I'm like, even what if we did it twice a year where we'll intake updates to that list? But, but you had to, logistically and logically, it makes so much sense for somebody to come into planning commission one month and be like, can we add this? And you're like, yeah, that makes sense. But. With the public, sure, but with the public noticing that we have to do, I, we can't just add something to the use table. And that was a big, I did fight that for on behalf of planning commission with our legal team. And Bart said like, no, nope, you need to have this statement. He's the one who wrote that statement.
Doesn't the current document have that exact same statement at the beginning? If it's not included on the current use table, it is not allowed, right? So, so it's not new, right? It's been around.
It's that use table.
The use table is three pages.
Yes, it's so overbearing.
Yeah, but isn't, isn't three pages better than eighteen of them or twenty of them, however many there are? And I mean, I, I feel just a little bit different from you in that I don't feel like this one is what we're, what's proposed in the 2025 is quite as restrictive of what's in the 2011. Now, is there some way to do it better? Yeah, sure, there, there might be. But, but honestly, reading the document side by side, I think the 25 one is less restrictive than the 2011 one.
But have you seen the, have you seen the one that was before you that was submitted by Alex? So that was the base to what has been designed now.
Well, that is the use table I started with, was his use.
Was out of that.
So that's kind of, we use the 2022 as the starting point for all of what you're seeing now. And so. And it was interesting even with the attorney side of it, in 2022, the same attorney had reviewed it. But you fast forward to 2025, Utah code has changed, which required him to go through this, this whole thing again. And he may change this even to his 2022 thoughts. And so, yeah, that, that makes it a little bit difficult to match.
So at this point, so at this point, I, I don't think, I don't think it is the ordinance. I think it's a use table that needs to be worked on with the community. And I think, I think we can make, we can simplify that and speed up this process if we go through the use table alone and then adjust the writing within the ordinance to match the use table. Because when you throw, when you throw this huge document out to the public, it's overwhelming. So if we simplify it and go to the public with our use table, we make the corrections before this ordinance is passed. We make the corrections within the ordinance, then we kick it back and have the ordinance reflect on the use table. And I think we've just simplified this and we can push this ordinance.
Can I make a comment?
Well, real, real quick. So instead of manufacturing of textiles and manufacturing of metal products, manufacturing of glass, we just need to go manufacturing. And here's some examples. Okay.
I just want to make a comment. Also, as a commissioner, we give back for you to work on this. You know, and so I think you have an opportunity, now that you hear what the public had to say, to kind of go over these things. And I, I just liked the opportunity here to hear you guys, the members of the commission, to just to tell how you feel, because we don't hear that. We don't. And so I think sometimes the people, the public want to hear each of your guys' opinion or how you feel about it. And I appreciate, and just even suggesting the things that are good suggestion. And I think, which, especially me, because I, at one point, I'm going to have to make a decision when it comes before us again. And I wanted to hear your voices, how you feel about it. And I know that we, when I first started here, we voted to open San Juan County for business because we are basically losing people, moving lots of people lately. For some reason, we had lots of deaths in like every, every week in Blany, had two or three people passing away. And so we need to figure out how we replace our population. We need to, we, we don't have the area that we can tell people, yeah, come, you spend this much money to do things. And so, but I wanted to hear from the ones that here and then we can make some more comment after. But if we can use the time to, you know, to hear each of you, how you feel. And I appreciate your comments because you're a person that has lots of knowledge. I mean, you have been a long time, you two have been a long time doing this and you know what I worked in the past. And one of these there will be gone and what are we leaving for other people to, to work with? And so, and I think it's a, a, a good time where we can, especially, I would like to hear from the commissioners or anyway.
I just want to say one thing real quick. So we, and to Lloyd's point and your point, I think the planning commission's intent has been greatly misconstrued by the public clamor. Our intent was to make it easier, open things up. I mean, make things, if we, if we want it, just make it permitted instead of making them jump through the conditional use hoops to streamline processes. Where we've seen, I think, a little more detail in the ordinance has been mostly out of our staff. And I just want to give a, a quick review of how this happened. So I came on in December. I took Scott's, Alex, Kendall worked on it a little bit. I took that document. So I had some leftover maps, a basic beginner use table and, and a document. And we started with staff here. And so we had, and they put in a lot of time. It was basically our plat review teams. We had health department, roads, surveyors, recorders, talked to the assessors a little bit. And we coordinated with all of those guys for probably four months. So it didn't hit planning commission until what, March or April? So that was after staff had gone through it. And a lot of discussions were made organic, like, hey, we've seen this issue in subdivisions. So let's address that specific issue. We've seen this issue with roads. Let's address that specifically. And that's maybe where Lloyd, you're seeing a little more of that detailed or that microscoping. Addressing. So, so we were trying to, we've made a lot of messes in this county and we're trying to not keep making those messes moving forward. So staff was a huge driver of the, the new base document. And, and taking another look at that. It hit planning commission in March, April. I don't remember. You guys did a ton of work on it. We had the community workshops. We then brought in a consultant in May. They were with us for a very short time, May, June. I wouldn't say that they thoroughly went through the ordinance, but they did do a lot on the mapping because we didn't have the software at that time. And so, you know, and they came down for the community workshops and they hosted the, the online platform for comments. And then it came to kind of this final push side of things. By July, things got sideways on the inside. And I would welcome that discussion with our county commissioners. Our planning commission, I think, is fairly aware of, of how that got botched. And so we had to go back to the drawing board in July. And it was sent on to our attorney team, which was two of our attorneys and a USIP representative attorney. They have been reviewing it since August. So August, September, October, November, December. They've had it five months. We've met once a week to go over this for two hours at a time. And our USIP attorney literally went through it page by page of where can we potentially see litigation? And so he definitely looked at it through that mindset of how do we prevent lawsuits coming forward? And that is what was proposed to you here in January, that planning commission passed. So our attorney team was Mitch Mon, Jen's Nelson and Bart Kuns out of USIP. And so they were the, they were the big legal push the last five months here to make sure what we had put together was fitting with Utah state code, but also that, that litigation side of it, that we weren't creating a bunch of loopholes and having a lot of issues. The Spanish Valley ordinance has made a lot of lawsuits for us. And, and so moving forward, we're trying to prevent that. And it's not going to be perfect. There's going to be things that come up. There's going to be more lawsuits. There's going to be things that, you know, the roads department goes, man, why did you do it like this? It's causing issues. We're going to have to revisit it. But we have to start somewhere and then we can make those adjustments. There's still going to be lawsuits. There's still going to be issues with, you know, subdivisions. There's going to be. There's still going to be issues with, you know, subdivisions. There's going to be updates from the Recorder's Office of State Law with what the recorders need. And so it's a it's an ever changing document. But we have to make sure that we're following that public notice. Um, guideline as well so that everybody sees it coming. We need to have things pitched well and far ahead of schedule. So that we have time to receive public comment and and make changes to move it forward.
Um. So, yeah, Lloyd is correct. We've been working on this for. Longer than four years. Um. I I made this statement in Blanding that that our we've got seven member board and I think that that our board is. Very concerned about private property rights. We'll always be that way. Um, I don't I don't think that we could ever think down another path that that wouldn't protect those those rights. Um. Our. Our planning meeting was kind of met with a lot of aggression. And I I still think back to that day that those people. Were not familiar with with the document. Last night's meeting, um. Uh, you know, was met with a lot less resistance. Kristen did a great job. Fact, last night, I thought, went really good. Um. Do I think that we can clean up the document? Absolutely. Um, it is very complicated. Uh, especially to somebody who hasn't worked on that document for ten years. Um. The use table. I like because I think it. Has tried to be as broad and inclusive of anything that we can think of, which. Has has created a position that shows that. We want. Growth. We want business. We want to allow you to do what you want to on your property for the most part. So I I do like the use table and I I like how in depth that it is. Um. You know, I I think that as time goes on, we're going to find. And and this is, you know. Yearly reviews, we're going to find stuff that, you know, why did we put that in there? And and we could take it out or we could change it. So it's going to be an ever. Changing document. Um. You know, our we're fourteen years into using the two thousand eleven, which was horrific to start with. And then we got. Spanish Valley's. Ordinance that was even worse. So I I think we're heading in the right direction. Um, and I I think that every day we get. The community more involved.
Yeah.
And more exposed to the document and and more accepting of the document. So. I think we're we're definitely going the right direction. Um, if we just have to continue to encourage people to get familiar. And help us get to here to there.
Clarifying question. On your Spanish Valley ordinance, so we have that ordinance. Would this new one replace that?
Everything. And it needs to.
So because the other thing about that is that's one. Comment I've heard several times is could we do Spanish Valley a little different? And then you have a count. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out. I'm just asking.
Basically, do you break it up with kind of communities?
Well, just because Spanish Valley has a totally different feel to it versus everyone else.
If Spanish Valley would like their own ordinance, they need to go ahead and incorporate. That's what that comes down to. So.
That's what I want.
Our county ordinance goes throughout the county.
Yeah.
And the way it happens is if if Spanish Valley decides to incorporate. They will adopt the existing ordinance that's in place. That's that's pretty normal. Yes, it the current one when they do the incorporation and then they make changes from there. That that is customary for a. Incorporation. They adopt what the ordinance is from the committee, the county. And then they would make their adjustments from there. And that's how they would start. That's how you have, you know, Monticello's got its own ordinance, Blanding, Bluff, you name it. That's the way Spanish Valley is going to have to do it because in my opinion, this county needs to have a blanket ordinance. Because it especially with the staffing that we have. I mean, we make it simple from one from the north end to the south and it's the same ordinance throughout. It's one one table, one thing is you go. If you want to have different ordinances in your area. Do the process. Incorporate that area.
Wait, can I speak to the difference?
No.
Anne has a comment.
Um, I just want to emphasize that. I try really hard to come to these conversations from the perspective of a resident. I'm, you know, not being elected. I am. Purely a volunteer resident of Spanish Valley and I've watched and observed this for so long. Um, that. I have no other interest than to try to be as objective as possible about this, but looking that the conceptual framework for this countywide ordinance. Creates so much conflict to me when it when you're looking at. Making rules for Spanish Valley that match the sticks of Blanding, right? Or out in the super remote parts. And the reason I say that is because if you look at it from an infrastructure point of view. There is nowhere else in the county unincorporated part. That has sewer and water. And that changes the dynamic completely. And our density is already. Ha- higher than anywhere else in the county. And it's just slated to grow more. So I think it's we need to take the time and think deeply about certain issues. How this ordinance impacts Spanish Valley. And even though we're not incorporated, we look heck of a lot more like Monticello and Blanding than we do. Um, Elk Meadows or I don't know, some other remote part of the county. So. I think we should treat Spanish Valley's ordinances more like planning for a city rather than. Keeping it or instead of ignoring it, um, ignoring what's right, you know, in our face. So.
Unincorporated Casabali. Has their own planning, Tony.
Well, so where where are we with that, right? Today is twenty twenty five. I mean, this ordinance keeps changing years. But um, on that note, I did want to point out, coming from that perspective of a resident watching this process. It has, you know, been recently brought up again in email that these maps to go with the. Language of the ordinances did not come out until July or the of this last year of summer. Nobody could make any thoughtful. Decisions around what is going to work and what wouldn't until you had an actual map zones. That we are looking at. Okay, now we know where on the ground. This, you know, is going to impact and how. So. Yes, it's been worked on for a long time, but it really hasn't gotten momentum until the maps came out.
So the reason I ask that is because one of the comments I get is that the ordinance feels like an HOA, like it really it really feels heavily towards Spanish Valley. And not toward the rest of county. And so I'm I'm just throwing the comment out there and that's why I asked the question is because. Are are we weighing one area more heavily or it does? Can it really fit the entire county? So.
And I want to the HOA comment, and even Lloyd said it, so I'm going to call him out on this too. Like what? Like what is HOA? Like what specifically is an HOA filling? The I wanted to touch real quick on there's been this pitch for like six different zones across the county. I did take it back to our attorney team and we talked about it. Well, do we want to do six different ordinances? That's what we're being called to do, right? But if you look at what would we change from one to the next? There isn't anything we would change. We wouldn't change the way we did subdivisions. We wouldn't change heliports. We wouldn't change. Um, conditional uses. We wouldn't. We wouldn't change anything. So I think what people are are probably asking for is not six different ordinance documents. They want microscopic mapping. Right? I want you to zoom way into La Salle. And zone La Salle in in a very specific way. We've tried to be very broad in our zoning. That's why so much of what you see is either. We had a lot of it multi-use just because that's the most open, but we've had calls for a lot of AGs. We changed a lot of it to AG. Um, but we I think what people are asking for when they want six different sets of rules is they're actually asking for six different sets of maps. Which we have done. So I think there's some an educational component to it here. We would like to be more broad. I don't think. The planning commission necessarily wants to go into microscopic. Planning. You know, I think I think there's a little subdivision out by um. The hydrogen. What is that? On the big hill after the Eston. Yeah, Flatiron Mesa, you know. I think we just said it's multi-use. And and so but do they want us to come in and say, no, 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 let's make this little pocket. That's a nice little cabin subdivision. Do we want to make that residential? So so if people want to, we we can. I I would. I personally would like to leave it broader and chunkier.
So speaking on Flatiron Mesa, the HOA is there. I mean, they overrule. They overrule the zoning ordinance, which they are very strict there between Bridger Jack, um, Wilson. Wilson Arch and then Flatiron. They, I mean, they overrule the ordinance that we put in place. So the the worries coming from those areas is kind of weird because. Their covenants alone, I mean, and their very, very strict covenants cover them.
Path Creek is similar to that.
Yeah, Path Creek is the same way.
Allowing it.
Basically, what I was getting at is we're allowing it. We don't want to be the hindering factor, but the HOA can decide to do whatever they want to do.
Do we have any HOAs in Spanish Valley?
Uh, most most of ours. Most of your subdivisions that's not just miners, like uh, somebody splitting their acre. Most of them have recorded, um, I think it's required. I think it has been for many years. CCNR is with them. CCNRs are enforced by the owners. They're not by the county. They're that's civil.
Even some of those covenants that might exist on the books, the residents aren't enforcing it amongst each other.
And that is up to them. Mount Hill, all that area had covenants that says no nightly rentals. It's in their covenants. Yeah, there's no there's no metal buildings. That's in their covenants.
And they're all there.
And they're all there. That's within the covenant. So if if the community. In in on Mount Hill in that subdivision decided. That um, they want to push the fact. Um, they can actually get the nightly rentals out of there without the county being involved. Through a civil case. So. So I wish Jens was here. I got a question. One that I think would simplify. Our nonconforming, and that's our biggest biggest worry that we got coming in. You're rezoning me. Now I'm nonconforming. I can't do anything. Can we reword the nonconforming?
So I think. Those cases are actually very few and I would have people reach out to me. Well, reach out to us because instead of making them nonconforming, we need to make those uses permitted. And that's what Nate and I were trying to do when we drove around trying to find what business was happening. It was for this. We don't want to make people nonconforming.
But we're totally, we're totally spot zoning when we do that. So if you've got a bunch.
Well, no, I'm saying let's add it to the use table for that zone.
Okay, but say say can we change the verbiage in? In the nonconforming? Or do we have to stay with the state's um definition? Because the verbiage that I would use with this that would actually. Enhance what, you know, with the zone changes that we're going to be making would be. We will not. Constrict you from expanding your business. Because a nonconforming use, I cannot expand my business from the use it was the date that the zone change went in place. If I've got twenty acres, I've got a business sitting on it. You change my zoning. I can't use the nineteen acres that I'm not. So if we could change the verbiage in that, as long as there's not a change of use.
That's land use law. I don't think you can change the definition of nonconforming.
Well, kid, can. I I think we cannot go backwards on it, but we can make it broader, correct? Matt?
That we would allow as a condition for nonconforming?
I can see this going.
Yes, if you're an existing business, you can expand it within your within the existing property that you own. You can't go by the neighbor's property and expand into that.
Well, yeah, I wish Jens was here, but my gut is when you read that Land Use Institute book. It's very clear.
Can you give her the microphone?
Well, when you re I. I think that would be a land use um law issue and I wish Jens was here. Um, but when I read that book, the Land Use Institute. Put out. It very clearly has um conditions for what is required to be nonconforming. And so I I doubt that you would be able to change that.
But Grand County doesn't follow that. They don't get trouble.
Grand County allows you to expand and still be a nonconforming?
No, they they allow you to change. Their their definitions. To broaden their definitions, not to take away.
Of nonconforming.
Of non, well, any state code.
I think I think these are discussions that need to go back to the planning commission. What I'd like to hear is. What direction does the San Juan County Commission have for us?
I want to make a comment regarding the meetings in Monticello and the meeting in Blanding. The difference. From the group that was last night, they they are an organized group. They have been busy with each other. They have been talking. They they have better question to us. The people in Blanding, they came to learn something and we were hit with a presentation, which was good to have a presentation. But um. That was the first contact. I come in, I think, okay, what's going on? Trying to get answer. And I think that's that was the difference. As you can see, those people last night, they were. More behave because they they knew what question they're going to ask. They've been talking to each other. They've been. So I, you know, that's why I noticed and I think that. You know, because I feel bad when we're comparing the two group, the two groups is like they have been doing their homework. And they have organized themselves. And it happened the first meeting when they found each other and they. They do and so.
They read it.
What?
They've read it. That's a good start.
Because, you know, they probably went and found a cup. They made copies for each other and they're kind of. You know, work, but it is true. That's true. They read it. But the people come in the first time and we're trying to. They want change and we just tell them that this is how we have it. And it looks like we don't want to make changes or it's kind of that's the frustration come. So your question, you want to hear from each of us? I can let Commissioner Mankel first.
Okay, so I think basically from talking with everyone, I and I and we've hit on several of these points is. I think definitely last night brought out some points about the definitions. Bec of what you what you guys had interpreted and what it reads. So I think to clear that up would be very, very helpful. I think any words we can remove, let's remove. It if if you just pull up the ordinance, you're either going to go to sleep or you're going to be so confused and lost. If you're not in the middle of it all the time, like, I mean, you guys work with it all the time. So for us, it feels a little bit. Legal heavy, like the wording. So here's me. I would probably just take it and I'd put it in my AI and say, give me a summary. Because then I can understand it. So I don't know if you can kind of simplify some of the language. And I really though, I think Chris, the one thing when you pointed out. The use table last night for me was very informative with that use table. When the when they understand that, so I guess my direction would be is come together with all the ideas you got, hammer them out. Then we either go back out to the communities again or we have like workshops again. So we can keep just refining that process along the way. So that's what I would suggest. And then, you know, I mean, you guys know the ordinance inside and out. You know what you're doing. But but it's it's kind of like, I know what it is, but yet for me to convey it to someone that doesn't is a little. There's there's a barrier and to break that to finish that barrier. So but yeah.
Just to say we know it. I.
I hope.
A few weeks ago, I said, you know. I'm committed to making this thing an active document. So I'm going to start all over. I didn't even make the definitions before I was out.
So, and I don't know how you do that, but I think what's daunting for people is they're going, and, and this came up many times is oh, it's 50 some pages. Now we're to 127. Regardless of whether they read it or not, that's their perception. So, and, and really it's certain, those that are involved are gonna understand it. And those that aren't, it's, it's kind of like too bad. Cause if you really have a vested interest, you'll come follow this and figure it out. So.
I, real quick, I think that's where we made the comment last night, that people shouldn't be reading it front to page one to page 129. Like see what chapters are applicable to you. And understand that taking it as a whole is, it is too much. And that wasn't the intent of the document to be taken as a whole. The intent of the document is I want to subdivide. I need to go to the subdivision, chapter six.
My last suggestion would be maybe, maybe you could put a few things in the paper, like an update to the public. Hey, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. Like, don't get donned with this. If, if you have something that pertains to you, please look at our ordinance online and then follow up with the department if you have concerns about that. Cause maybe that would help instead of just, hey, here's the whole document. So, but the more we engage and educate the public, the better off I think we're all gonna be.
Commissioner Harvey.
There could be scenarios or examples presented. So say you have a X, Y, Z, and you know, something common.
You know, uh, a scenario could be illustrated that a lot of people have in common, especially with the cottage industry. A frequently asked question. Yeah, there you go.
And maybe publish that in, on the, in the paper.
Yeah, cause I think that's something we didn't do when we were going through the use table, is play out some of the scenarios. So a, as we've changed things, like for example, long-term use of RVs, have we actually, I mean, we don't have an ordinance to go with that, but what is the process going to be for that? Are you going to be required to have electricity and, you know, sewer and water? And how, how is that going to be managed? Cause that's something else we just haven't thought all the way through. And yeah. And short-term rentals, like how do you know uh, your neighbor is legally doing a short-term rental now that that it's permitted potentially across the board? How do we know that the counties, there's not going to be illegal ones? Um, there's little things like that, that even though we have an ordinance for short-term rentals, those are little details that I think we still have loopholes around. And being from Spanish Valley, you know, I have to worry about those kind of things more than maybe other people um, in the county.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize. I'm a little under the weather. But um, I will do my best to, to try and give feedback on what I would like the uh, Planning Committee or Commission to, to show for, for my support. Um, I'll start with the simple, straightforward. The planned meeting dates are too close together for, for some of us who want to participate as commissioners. We are currently indisposed at the moment because we travel to the state capital every week. And we're also following state legislation. And um, and then of course, I'm the travel liaison down south, and so I'm stretched in many directions. And and I'd like the Commission to reconsider the, the dates that are there. Um, I'm looking at the timeline Commissioner Mon and I set forth, which is six months. And it would be more meaningful to spread out those public education dates throughout the six months and not just a cluster in, in two months. That's, that's what I'm thinking, I'm seeing is let's get this done and over with by the end of March, I think it was. And if we can take a step back and utilize the entire six months that's there, that would be, that would be important. I think the public wants to feel an opportunity to be heard. And because this is public policy and because it impacts the public, we're gonna have to deal with the public comments. And that's not the easy ones, but you learn from the public too at some point. And the public, like us, go to jobs Monday through Friday. They work between eight and five. And a lot of them commute out of our county or are committed during those hours. And they want to participate, but they can't. And lately, there's been requests to allow video links to be provided. So they're able to, to be part of the process. I think that's the day of, an age we're living in now is, is video and Zoom. And if we can provide those video links for the public, so they feel included, that would be valuable. And to also allow them to provide their comments during those meetings. That would be us, the Commission, going above and beyond to, to gather public comments and be more accessible to, to um, providing input. And so I'd like to, to ask the Commission to see if that could happen. Um, I was prepared to just come to these meetings and bring my own laptop and set up a Zoom link. But um, I have confidence that the Commission can accommodate. And if there's no funding for, for laptops or Zoom links, we, we should, we should have that. We should provide that as leaders, so the public has that opportunity. Um, some of the, some of the uh, comments that are shared today that I've listened into about the history. It's gonna have to be reiterated at every meeting, I think, because since the public's finally being engaged, they don't know the history. But the recommendation I would think of is if you can create flyers that just show the timeline, just on a one page, this is how long the Commission has been working on this project. These are the dates when 2011 came out. This is the date when 2018 it was approved, you know, those, those summaries. One-page summaries are meaningful. Cut through, through the chase of getting to the substance of the meeting, which is what is your concern with this? With poli, with the policy? Where is it that there are concerns? You know, instead of rehashing um, a lot of things. So maybe handouts would be helpful. I know there's confusion from the public when they come and ask for current drafts versus prior drafts. Um, a lot of them don't know how to access um, the policy itself. Excuse me. Um, I did navigate and it is on our website. I think it's on a planning and zoning website. Um, but I noticed there's also a slew of documents. Uh, I, I don't remember if they were, they were files that need to be relabeled um, or, or dates or something like that. But one thing that might help is just simply labeling it current draft or something, or draft dated oh, two, 18, 2025, you know, that would help. Uh, and, and uh, just making those links with the titles simple um, would help. I think that's, that's what I'd like to see. Really, when it comes down to it, when the six months is over, my biggest questions are gonna be did the public have that opportunity to express their concern? Did we do everything we possibly could to facilitate public dialogue and give each citizen an opportunity to say their piece on, on the draft? That's my, my rule of measure, I think. And finally, did the Commission respond to the concerns that the public had? That's really what I'm looking for. And that's what it comes down for me personally. But I'd like to end by expressing my appreciation for your work. It's not easy work. My goodness, writing policy. Um, and the dedication you have to do this and to accomplish this. You know, thank you. You just have to remember that when you're in your workspace, you kind of get stuck in that workspace. And you forget the rest of the world. And right now, the rest of the world is the ones that are, are worried and are confused and need that assurance. This is okay. This is something that will benefit us. This is how it will benefit us. What do you think? Thank you for what your thoughts are. We hear you kind of approach. Thank you. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Um, I have a few thoughts that I want to express myself. Um, you know, from day one, I had attended meetings. And I heard some comments that probably was one of the few commissioners that had come to meetings. It wasn't an assignment. It was a choice. And I learned to appreciate the work you guys did. Everybody running from work just before six o'clock, trying to make it to the meeting sometime eating something that you grabbed. I know partially had time for dinner. And sometimes the meetings were a long time and you, many of you are on the road driving through their territory and bad weather and I bear appreciative of what you do. And and my favorite part was that when I was here and your staff came before me, I never questioned. I saw you talk about it. I knew where it came and I felt really good because I I didn't know all the ins and outs about what, you know, a property. And, and then I learned that the people go through all the hoops and everything and you guys approve it? I knew that um, and I saw you debate it or whatever. I felt really good about doing it. I didn't have to say here, wonder should I do this or that? I just want to ask you a question. When you send a packet to us, did you guys feel like it was? And I'm not, I'm not trying to, to criticize. Did you guys feel good about it? You felt like, okay, this, this is the best that we can do?
I say, yeah.
You did? Did you guys feel?
You know, we may not all agree on it, which, I mean, this board don't always agree on everything. But it was the best that this board could put out at that point. Whether Ann didn't agree with certain things. I didn't agree with certain things. So on, so forth. I mean, it was because of, we are a seven-man board, that, that was the best of what could come out. Yes, I think there should be changes. Yes, Ann thinks there should be changes. TC, so on, so forth. But as a board, that was agreed upon, and that's what was submitted to the Commission. And if, if I can add, um, my, my feelings on the speeding up the process of these meetings, we, you know, we, we need to get the meetings done, get the public input. And then we've got to have some time in that six months. Cause you know, we'll only have three or four months. So that's three or four meetings that we get to finalize it, to get it to you again. So if, if Commissioner Harvey, um, if we were able to make sure that these meetings are all broadcast for Zoom, would that be sufficient to keep with the schedule that we have now? That way it would give us time thereafter to meet um, as a board to put these comments together and get this done in the next six months to get it before this Commission again.
Do you know, we always can add to the six months too.
Well, we don't want to. We really don't want to.
I know. And I, um, do you know?
The meetings were broadcast.
Yeah, yeah.
They are? Oh, okay. And people can get into them on Zoom. Okay.
Max been running the broadcast both at the Blinding meeting and the Mosa meeting.
So I'll miss the others. So Kristina will have to take those over.
I will need somebody else there to help me. I can't run a meeting and run broadcasts.
So trans, trans volunteering. So, okay, awesome.
I committed all the meetings.
Yeah, I can make all those. But we do have that virtual, 15 people showed up last night online and had seen that. And so some of them come and gone. Some of them were from Blinding. You know, that is carrying over and watching, you know, or already listening to the comments really. Um, so it's been actually attended.
For replay?
So Commissioner Stubbs, your question about the document? No, I don't think it's perfect. But there's processes in it to be able to change it and make it more perfect as time goes on. That's what I liked about it. And that's why I sent it to you, cause, not because it was perfect. But, but because I think there's mechanisms to change and make it better.
I wasn't saying it should be perfect.
Yeah.
The way I felt that we were being rushed.
Yeah.
And I knew that not many people had the opportunity, either because I don't know what you guys do when you get something in the mail. You know, even your ballot, you put it in the pile of the mail and it gets filed. You just think I had to do this. And lots of people don't do it. Or they don't understand why this came. But when I hear the word that we botched the process, people don't understand the responsibility you feel, because this is not Soviet steps. I represent the public. And it's the public. Some people had the opportunity to get good, organize and learn the things. Some people look at me and say, Commissioner, we elected you. You know, to look at their interest. And there's a lot more people, adults, that, that, that the ones that are organizing, that can learn from each other. It'd be wonderful. Everybody can do it. I just take this very ser, seriously. And I take what you're saying very ser, seriously. But I don't like the process of being pushed, you know, I mean, what Commissioner Harvey said about us traveling. I came here, we had a meeting last night. We're gonna have all this meeting. And we'll travel to South Lake to be there for tomorrow's meeting. And those meetings up there are very important to our county. And so when I'm over there, which I have been all this time I've been there, I worrying about things in San Juan County, is they're concentrating the things that some of the bills that may affect us here too. And so and, and it's a reality that we had to, you know, it's, it's such a, we had to do it. But I just want to, to, for you to understand that. I I just figured the did you know that we have time to work on things? And I know we can change things, but what is bothering the public? You know, what is, why the public is not trusting? And the difference, like I said earlier, the Minnesota, the group last night, they're very much organized. They're reading, they had a good question. The Blinding people just came the first time and they were ready to fight, I guess, because they don't understand what's going on. And so I just, um, I just wanna appreciate. I know you guys all work hard and it's been a long time going. And I know there's some good things we can improve. But also we have to consider those things that can be permanent. And as we go, someday we'll be gone, other people come, and how they're gonna take that document, how it affected people. Gone, other people come and how they're gonna take that document, how it affect the people and that's the thing, but. Anyway, anybody else have more comments or?
I have a question. Do you have any requests for myself or any of us? That we can help with this process?
I I really appreciate you guys' involvement. I'd like to see how the next three community workshops play out. And then Commissioner Harvey, I'm probably gonna go out on a limb right here and get all these people mad at me again, but. I think we owe. One more effort at blending. So so let us finish this and then maybe in a month, schedule one more meeting back down there. We'll get some more tweaking done to the document, uh, clean up things.
Did you see, even after we send it back, there's still lots of tweaking, so that means there wasn't quite. So.
Well, with public input, you know, we're recognizing stuff.
That's what I mean. We need the more we have.
At the time.
Do we have anybody in line?
I'm gonna say no.
Not to what? What was the question?
He weighed in and then Anne's gonna weigh in.
Sorry, sorry, Trent, I'll give you a second. Well, having been a part of the process and not seeing repeatedly, not seeing enough. Public participation, I would say. There was participation, but it was selective here and there. It was about particular issues. But that night at the Planning Commission, when it felt like the entire county was showed, had showed up finally, it was like. Moment to celebrate, even though they were very angry at us. It was so nice to finally see that there were people in the county. That cared, because when you go to those meetings and you know what it's like, nobody shows up, you wonder if anybody cares. And so you just move along, and I think that was a mistake that we probably should have done more public outreach, but. Having, you know, reading the room, for me, it was really obvious, not only did I feel like. That there were things that had not been thoroughly thought out as it impacts Spanish Valley, but also that. There were so many people with concerns in that, we were gonna have to address them, and we need to get all of those details put into a final document. And let everybody see it, not just hearsay, like, oh, yeah, we'll put that in, we'll put that, you know, they, people need to see a final product in print. Before they can feel confident about what they are agreeing to or what they are supporting. And that was gonna be too messy, trying to push that your way at that later date. Um, so, and I just felt also bad for the people that weren't there at that meeting, that didn't. Because usually those meetings don't happen like that, where you get to come and say what you want, and then somebody writes it down and. Says yes, or maybe says no, whatever. That's not how the process works usually, and so those people that probably would have liked to say. Hey, I want, you know, this or that, they didn't show up, because that they didn't know that that could happen that night. So that also was. I think, you know, stretching um legal bounds for how we conduct public meetings. Um, so I don't, I feel like we, this is great, we're slowing down, we're making sure we got everybody's consensus, people are on board. I think we'll have more success passing it next time with all the changes, and then there's still some little details to work out, but.
We, the changes is hard because. Changes are hard because we have to allow for changes even right up to the point of adoption. And I feel like we're in this cycle, like we can't close it down and be like, okay. No more changes and, you know, here is the final thing. If somebody at Planning Commission says, well, I'd like to address this one thing, then we're in this vicious cycle of. Always, there's another thing to change or another word to add, or let's rework this language. There'll always be that, and we can't ever have like, there's no way to do a short stop of. This is it, no changes. And so I I think our commission has been caught up in that a little bit. Of just that never-ending change request.
You don't intend to mean no changes ever, right? Just no changes in the document being considered until. The annual or biannual change comes along. So I guess I don't understand that, because I, you know, we've heard a little bit about timeline here and in six months and. And wanting to get out to community, community meetings, but if I I feel like we have to have a document that's pretty dagum solid. Right? That folks can read over and look over. Yeah, that's dang near there, and then go out and have these, have have some public information meetings, right? And and so I guess if we're constantly changing the document clear up until the dagum adoption date, I don't. I don't think that's a, man, that sucks.
That'd be hard, I don't think.
And we try to get things changed and reposted, like, I'll be honest, I I got things changed and reposted. That same night after Planning Commission, and I missed private roads. I mean, it was like two o'clock in the morning. Now, I couldn't republish it because we were within the ten days window, but in the, if you notice in the. County Commission packet, it's correct, according to what Planning Commission wanted. And so there's things like that. We have these timelines and stuff of how changes need to be posted and documented, so that there's enough. There for the next public hearing, and so I think. Planning Commission could. Address this internally to to have an understanding that we're not gonna make any changes. For this document, so that we have a chance to see it in full. I mean. That's a hard one to say, because what if we find one little thing that we don't like, and then we go, well, hold on, hold on, just maybe just change this one thing. And then we'll get it republished and redocumented.
Well, then you would do it following the process. In the meeting, you would say, I I. I don't know if we're gonna recommend or approve this time around, but. Yeah, with this change or or something, you know, but at least it's officially done in the meeting and and. This time around, I think, based on all of the public comments and community workshops. I, it's gonna be hard to argue for some major change towards the end, I think, now that we've had so much input.
Yeah, Commissioner Mon, anybody else have another comment?
So, I just a question. I mean, in this process that we've done for. The last year, have we made all the requirements for public contact? Between the state website. Our publications, everything, everything's been done legal to this point, of everything we've done to let the people know that's what's going on. We, I think at some points, we go beyond that. We we've had meetings, um, we've had them in Spanish Valley, LaSalle. I don't think this county has lacked on the outreach. I really don't. This county is, other than going door to door and saying, hey, you need to show up, we've done everything that's required plus some. To this point, on the ordinance as it was being built from day one. So the fact to to say that this. This body or this body or our county in general has lacked in publishing and getting this out to. Uh, the citizens is incorrect, because we've done everything the state requires. We've gone beyond that. We've put out. Um, in the beginning of all this, we put out. Some group meetings that, you know, it's it's, you can't just go door to door. We've we've sent out. Every tax notice, any anybody that gets taxed in San Juan County had um something sent to them. So, I mean, I don't want to discredit this county for not doing their due diligence on getting to the public. And and that's what I feel like we're doing right now, is like, we're we're saying that we never did what we were supposed to, to reach out to the community. And I think we, I think we have, and we've gone beyond that, and now it's like, we're discrediting. What we've done at this point of reaching out.
So what that we discovered, that the word of mouth is the best thing to do, and I think is. You know, people organizing, I don't know, I mean, families are organizing, our neighbors are organizing, and so. And that takes time, that's a problem, it takes time. And. I want to give Commissioner Mon, she has a um a comment, because we have to get ready for another meeting pretty soon, but.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate you guys coming today. I know some of you took off, I mean, you took off work to be here, and that's been. Hopefully you felt this has been helpful. I feel it's been very helpful, and I think we need to continue to communicate. My last um. Probably request in this kind of piggybacks off Commissioner Harvey is that when when we have those opportunities to make changes, whether we do it biannually or annually. Then maybe we we've learnt, I I agree, you did completely what the state required. But the public is demanding a little more, and so maybe with that being said, what we should do is when we have those opportunities to make changes. The request can be filled, that we do, we we advertise again, and whether it's just a um community work sessions or whatever. Because I think whether whether they were informed or not, they're not gonna remember that. It's just the fact that if we really make an effort to include and say. Just like these workshops within the communities, which you had, and they were unattended, I I am the first to admit they were unattended, but. Um, some, like a one-page flyer in the paper, but. At least let people know there will be an opportunity to make those changes if they choose to attend. And so, other than just, and one thing, I, was it you, Kristen, that? If people will sign up for the public notice, we really need to educate our county on that. I think that's very imperative. We educate our our public to be registered with public notices, and that they. When you're filling your requirement, we're completely fulfilled. So anyhow, but thank you for coming.
Think about the print be a little larger, because the older people said they're gonna.
I'm sure I don't need this. Commissioner Mon suggested yesterday, last night, that I do that. Kristen suggested as well. I went on, I could not figure it out. I just had Rosa try to do it. I can't figure, she couldn't figure out how to sign up for the public notices. It is like impossible, it just, there's nowhere to sign up. It is obvious, so. We we gotta create some instructions or something, because I want to go out and tell everybody I'm talking to to sign up, except I can't figure out how to sign up.
So just one, one thing about the postcards, flyers, you know, the the advertisement in the in the papers. I think we've tried to be pretty cost-conscious and minimizing the amount of of flyers and stuff we send out, right? So I I think that as a group, I I'm certainly happy to push for that, but you know, we'll also have to have a little bit of funding to make that go. Right? That's a piece of that.
Thanks, Commission, for our meeting this morning. Appreciate you.
Well, thank you for coming and like, um, I know this takes up, you guys had to take time from work. We appreciate it, and I hope this is not the only time we can get together and talk. Because one thing that hard part for me as a commissioner is that sometime I cannot talk, I mean, you know. Because of rules of regulation, and I did not make any comment until today, and even sometimes people. With and, you know, trying to engage me to give my opinion, I tried to kind of leave things. To you guys anyway, so thank you so much, and I guess we'll.
Need a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, Commissioner.
I'll second that.
Okay, in our favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We should have let you hold your sign.
Ten minutes.